So I now open our meeting of August 18th, 2020, and I will call that meeting to order. I would like to take a moment to welcome our new city manager, Mario Canasares. And he's got just a little over one week work under his belt. And I'd like to ask you, Mr. Canasares, would you like to say a few words?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, members of staff in the community. My name is Mario Canasares. I'm your new deputy, excuse me, new city manager, sorry. Old habits die hard. New city manager. Thank you for selecting me as the new city manager. I'm honored and humbled to be here. Before I go any further, I would like to give a quick shout out to my family, my wife Jennifer, and my two daughters Caitlin and Allison. They may or may not be watching, but if not, they will be later. Just as you mentioned, Mayor, I've been on the job just seven days. I've had, I've been in a number of meetings with staff. I've met a lot of folks in the community. Everyone so far has been very friendly, very welcoming, and has really made my first week very special. So I thank you all and thank them for that as well. I look forward to working with council, working with the staff and the community to really bring a bright future to Nacogdoches and look forward to just working with everyone and many great things ahead. So thank you very much.
I'm having a sound thing out on me, Jan.
Yeah. I'm not sure.
Are we having some sound difficulties?
No, ma'am, I think it's, I think it's just yours. It may be your connection. Because you're, you have frozen on me. Can you hear me?
You just fine.
Maybe if you move to an, can you move to another room?
I've lost the video.
Yeah, because I can see else, okay, Mayor.
Well. Got it. And.
Okay.
Wondering how to do this.
I can hear you now. I just don't have a video.
I can also try to rejoin, perhaps.
Yeah, I can hear you very well now. It's just. Okay, the video's good now.
Okay, I'm close to my router. I'm in the same room with my router. So you still are having trouble?
No, ma'am, I can see you and hear you.
Okay. I'm going to exit and try to rejoin.
Now, you're very clear.
Frozen up here.
Amelia, would you say something to see if your video pops up?
Yes, sir. I will say something. How are you?
Great. Good to see you. Yes, you do. Jan. Jan.
I'm here. I had done mute. Sorry.
Oh, now, everybody pops up. Oh, there you are now. At first, you wasn't, but now you are there. Okay, we good to go now?
Mayor.
Mayor, your microphone's off. Okay, now can you hear me? Yes, it's very good now. Okay, I don't have any video, though. Hold on, let me turn on. Hmm.
Can you see me?
Uh oh, that's not what I wanted. Okay, let me, I'm so sorry. Let me find. We are going to move to our consent agenda. And if there is anyone that would like to remove an item for discussion, if not, chair would entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion to prove the consent agenda as it is written.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, I am not hearing anything. There, now I can hear. Did we have a motion?
Yes, ma'am, we had a, Roy made the motion and Jay seconded.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion, we'll all in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving to our regular agenda, item number five. We will receive a legislative update from Kelly Barnes with Hillco Partners.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council, and great to be with you virtually. Sorry not there in person. I'm going to grab my screen share here to pull up my presentation, I think which is in your packets. So hold on one second here. Okay, everyone see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that. You figured by now with all these virtual meetings, we have a little, have this stuff figured out a little better from doing so much. So my apologies. Well, it's great to be with you all tonight. I'm going to run through my presentation and feel free at any point just to interrupt me if you have a question. Of course, I'm happy to answer them at the end, too, if that's easier for everyone. So we'll get started, and most of you already know about Hillco Partners. But just some background, we were founded in 1998. We've had a long history, over 260 years of experience combined. 16 lobbyists. We're the largest government affairs firm in Austin. We're a full-service public and government affairs consulting firm. We do advocacy, public policy, communications, and work in the regulatory arena as well. We've had a great track record of working for our clients over the years. And one of the main reasons is we pride ourselves on a great support staff as well. I know the mayor and Larissa and others have been able to see some of our materials that have been put out, especially during COVID-19, about what is the government doing in Austin? What's the government doing in Washington? What are the latest announcements from the governor's office and other agencies, just to make sure everyone is in the loop back in Nacogdoches? As I mentioned, we've got 16 lobbyists, and we've got different lobbyists that cover different sectors. We've got transportation, healthcare, energy, environment, municipal issues as well, which I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce tonight. Joining us from Hillco is Eddie Solis. Eddie works on municipal issues and assists me with Nacogdoches from time to time. He formerly worked at TMRS and is a great member of our team here. So look forward to you getting to meet Eddie next time we can meet in person. Moving on, I kind of wanted to give you a brief summary of some visits we had right before COVID-19 kind of took over everyone's lives. So in early spring of 2020, Larissa and Steve Bartlett came down to Austin. I know, Mayor, you were sick at the time, but we missed you. We'll run through who we met with. We started off at TechStop, which I think was one of the better meetings of the day, with Quincy Allen. Quincy is the Director of District Operations and the Head Engineer at TechStop. And why he's important is that he oversees the UTP program, Unified Transportation Program. And as you all know, Nacogdoches has five big projects in there, and we want to make sure those stay funded and continue in the process. And, you know, one thing that's changed since that meeting is that with COVID-19, you know, the legislature's going to be in a much different position next session from a budget standpoint. And to really protect projects already in the UTP is going to be critical next session. We met with the Office of the Governor, Adriana Cruz, the Executive Director of Economic Development and Tourism. And it's great about her job is she gets to travel the country and the world before COVID, to go out there and recruit businesses to come to Texas. And primarily, what we wanted her to know is, hey, remember Nacogdoches as you're out there recruiting companies to come. Here is what we offer. We've got an educated workforce. We've got a great university. And keep us in mind as you're looking at these companies trying to find a great match. We also met with the Texas Water Development Board, the Chairman of the Board, Peter Lake. He's actually a Tyler native, so understands East Texas pretty well, and discussed the Central Heights water issue and some loan programs that the Water Development Board has access to. And going to the next page, we also talked about Central Heights with the Texas General Land Office with Trey Baum, their Deputy Director. They've got a slew of disaster recovery grants available as well that could assist with Central Heights. But Steve Bartlett has all the material on that. And obviously, one of the advantages of the GLO financing is that it's a grant, whereas the Water Development Board is a loan program. So that's obviously much more attractive. And then we ended the day meeting with Senator Nichols' office. I know all of you know Senator Nichols really well, and Angus Luft and his Chief of Staff, you know, you've got incredible representation, which is fantastic. We went over our TechStop projects with him, and he was very much up to speed, as he always is, on what's going on in Nacogdoches. So ended the day with him and really a productive visit to kind of give Nacogdoches some more visibility in Austin. And I think that Central Heights aspect was really critical to really look to the state of what are some innovative financing tools to help you guys as you figure out how to fund the ongoing maintenance for that water supply. Moving on to COVID, we've been coordinating at Hillco Partners with Pam and Anna Middlebrook. I know Anna's no longer with the city. Primarily, we've been working on focusing what the city can receive reimbursement for and what expenses aren't eligible. And the Texas Department of Emergency Management is really running point on that in the state. And the big thing that we're quarterbacking back and forth between the city and TDEM is we are looking at these expenses over here. Can that be considered an allowable expense or not? And basically, they're learning every day some of the things that are allowable and not. And the thing I've cautioned Pam and the city throughout this process is, is this something you specifically need solely dedicated to COVID and the new life we live in? If so, then it's an allowable expense. If it's something you've had in the budget for the past 10 years and hasn't been approved, for instance, well, that's not something COVID-specific. And so really to be careful, because there's going to be an active audit process that follows once we get through this public health emergency. And so cities need to be really cognizant of their expenses and making sure they're making smart choices, which I know Nacogdoches has been super careful with. What's going on in Austin right now? We're in the interim. The legislature convenes again January of 2021. There are more than 200 interim charges that have been issued. Obviously, a heavy focus on COVID, property tax relief, and House Bill 3, public education reform from last session. Hearings are starting. The Sunset Commission has begun, and all the legislative hearings have been set for early September. So the Capitol is making plans to try and reopen with plexiglass in the committee rooms, temperature checks, mask requirements. It's not been fully ironed out yet, but the Capitol is gearing up for somewhat of a restart here in the next couple of weeks. As I mentioned, the Sunset Commission, I'm not sure if all of you are familiar with, but every 10 years, each state agency has to be reauthorized by the commission. It's comprised of members of both the House and the Senate. So it rotates which agencies are up for review. And so this legislative session, you'll see some of the highlights. 16 total agencies, but the big ones are the Texas Department of Licensing and Regulation, Governor's Office of Economic Development and Tourism. And why that's important is all the incentive programs that the state has to lure business to Texas is housed in that office. And so that's going to be a really critical one to watch through this process. And then TRS, you know, I know we've got a lot of retired teachers in Nacogdoches and also San Jacinto River Authority coming close to the county in Nacogdoches, one to watch as well, always on water issues. Looking forward to the 2021 session, some of the big issues we're seeing already developing, and they're already beginning work on, frankly. Local control will be another one, an effort to challenge local government authority during a disaster. You guys don't need any explanation on what you've had to do during COVID and what the state has done. There'll be a big fight over not just budget decisions, but your ability to govern nondiscriminatory policies and initiatives. And then the big one is just the budget, frankly. The comptroller has predicted $4.6 billion shortfall to end this year. In anticipation of this, all state agencies have had to reduce their budgets. But what's the bigger issue than that is that next session, we're not going to have near as much money to spend in the next budget, and we're anticipating that being in excess of potentially $10 billion. We'll see. It's still a moving target as businesses are able to reopen and kind of get back to work. And then keep in mind, the Texas Rainy Day Fund, we're going to have close to $9 billion to begin the session, and that is the state's savings account, for lack of a better word. So that's some money we do have to help with this crisis. Property taxes, that will be another big issue. Basically, the big effort underway to discourage locals from taking advantage of the property tax disaster loophole, which allows you to go above that cap that was put in place if it's a natural disaster. And so some lawmakers are looking at legislation that that can only be used for a quote-unquote "natural disaster" and not the pandemic that we've gone through. So that's going to be a big fight. And then just today, I'm sure some of you have seen the headlines. The governor had a press conference in Fort Worth and announced a big effort next session that's basically if you choose to defund your local police department by $1, your property taxes are frozen at that current level and cannot be raised. And that is an idea that he put out today, basically due to what happened in the city of Austin with them defunding a portion of their police department. So that's a big issue to watch next session. And then redistricting happens every 10 years. Since this data is not going to come to the state until late summer of next year, so there will be a special legislative session solely dedicated to redistricting, and there could be other subjects as well. But, you know, East Texas has lost just a little bit of population comparatively to the state. So Senator Nichols and Representative Clardy's districts will change a little bit. Not probably not a ton, but there will be some movement, just as the urban areas have grown so much compared to some of the more rural communities around the state. A quick little political update, and I'll run through this. I'm sure you have some questions. The Texas House right now is 83 Republicans, 67 Democrats. We've got a very competitive general election. Speaker Dennis Bonin retired, so he will not be the speaker next session. We have a guarantee to have a new speaker. And the Democrats themselves feel they have a real opportunity to take over the House of Representatives for the first time in 20 years. And so that would obviously give the state a Democratic Speaker with a Republican Governor and Lieutenant Governor. So that would create quite a bit of division in Austin. It would seem, having the first time in quite a while, another party take control of the chamber. The Senate, 19 Republicans, 12 Democrats, one retirement from El Paso. And then we've got one competitive race in San Antonio. So not a ton going on in the Senate this November for elections. Lieutenant Governor will return, but the three-fifths rule, which allows you to bring up legislation, could be in jeopardy if Democrats were to pick up that swing seat. Moving forward, Hillco Partners in Nacogdoches, we're getting ready to place, you know, plans for next session to make sure you can be as successful as you want to be. We're already undertaking some action right now, especially with interim committee hearings, tracking the property tax debate, and then really assisting with COVID-19 and all the questions the city has with the Texas Department of Emergency Management. And then obviously, the TechStop issues. One of the big things I forgot to mention is that Quincy Allen, the Head Engineer who we met with, expressed a lot of interest in getting out to Nacogdoches to personally tour the five projects we have. They are just about to allow TechStop staff to go out and be in the field again for work. So once that happens, we'd love to get Quincy out to Nacogdoches to personally see those projects. And then looking at next session, one of the big things that can really help not only Nacogdoches, but every city really, is to kind of get a game plan for what they want to see happen next session. So basically, what we're looking at for Nacogdoches, anything we can positively amend code and legislation. So looking at potential bills that the city might need, identifying stakeholders on various issues, agency, you know, who's running the agencies, who are the point people to get things done, working with bill authors to file legislation timely if Nacogdoches has legislation, and quickly advance it through the process. Secure resources and material witnesses for the House and Senate committees. That's a big thing, is you being able to come to Austin and testify. And that's a big point of contention right now with COVID-19. And then obviously, remain mindful of harmful topics. You know, be on the lookout for things that could hurt Nacogdoches coming down the pipe next session. So hopefully, that wasn't too much to throw at you in a short amount of time. I'll exit the screen sharing and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Kelly. That was very informative. So are there any council members that do have a question for Kelly? Okay, hearing none. Well, thank you so much for your presentation. And I do want to mention, again, I know I've told you this before, but the updates that your company has put out have been so helpful. They are very thorough, and having those state updates have really been very helpful to us. So thank you very much for that.
You bet. And I'm, Mayor and Larissa and Mario have my contact information. So any questions, feel free to ping me or Mario, and we'll do the best we can. So thank you for having me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Okay, bye-bye. We're going to move on to six, is a public hearing. Consider ordinance amending the boundaries of zoning district with Nacogdoches. And I will let Ms. Chafin explain a little bit more of that. Good evening.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I will share my screen now. So just to, here we go. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. This request is to rezonate approximately 1.2 acres, a property located at 1208 South Shawnee Street, from R32 family to B1 local business. The property is located on the west side of South Shawnee Street, just south of Cleaver Drive. There's a beauty parlor located on the front portion of the property that's been owned and operated by the applicant, Ms. Betty Jacobs, since 2003. Ms. Jacobs also uses the building to store and make floral arrangements, and she plans to place a new commercial building on the back portion of the property to help her expand her floral business. The bulk of the property was rezoned to B1 local business in 2003, and a small area zoned R32 family, which was also owned by the applicant at the time, was inadvertently left out of the rezoning request. This was discovered during the pre-development process, whenever the applicant came to staff to talk about adding the additional commercial building on the property. The surrounding land uses, or sorry, the surrounding areas include a mix of both residential and commercial zoning districts, consisting primarily of R32 family, which allows for duplex and single-family development. The area also includes B1 local business zoning districts, which is intended to accommodate those business activities that supply the day-to-day commercial needs of nearby residents. This property does take access to South Shawnee Street, which is a collector's street, and is appropriate for commercial activity. These surrounding developed land uses include a beauty parlor, I stated before, a single-family residences, a manufacturing home, and a church on the corner of South Shawnee Street and Cleaver Drive. Future land use map does designate this area as single-family, which is described in the comprehensive plan as a conventional one-family detached dwelling units. While the future land use plan is designated, or the property is designated as single-family on the future land use map, it's always relevant to consider the predominant user zoning in the area when reviewing these types of requests, which in this case does include a mix of both neighborhood commercial and residential zoning districts. It's also important to note that the future land use map isn't intended to be a partially specific mandate for how property should be developed, but instead, it's meant to be used as a tool to help visualize the desired future pattern, the desired development pattern in the community. But we also have to determine whether the request is also otherwise in keeping with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. In this regard, the comprehensive plan does state that neighborhood retail service uses, such as those that are allowed in the B1 local business zoning district, are appropriate when they're located at intersections of collector streets and the edge of logical neighborhood areas. This property does, again, take access to a collector's street and is located close to the intersection of Cleaver Drive and South Shawnee Street, which does act as the entrance into the neighborhood. So while the area isn't designated for commercial uses on the future land use map, the request is compatible with zoning districts in the area and is otherwise in keeping with the land use policies outlined in the comprehensive plan. When reviewing an application for zone change, the following conditions, as outlined on your screen, shall be considered. And these include compatibility with adjacent land uses, providing for the orderly growth and development for surrounding property, providing for adequate infrastructure, such as utilities, roads, and drainage, the design of drives and parking, prevention of nuisances, lighting, landscaping, and the proposed use being in accordance with the comprehensive plan. So in conclusion, based on the findings outlined in the staff report and those that we've mentioned during this presentation, staff does find that the request meets the review criteria as outlined. And we do recommend approval of the request to change the zoning of the subject property from R32 family to B1 local business. This item was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting on August 10, and we recommend approval of the request unanimously. That concludes staff's presentation. The applicant, Ms. Jacobs, is here with me if the council has any questions. And I will now stop sharing my screen to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Bolden, do you have any questions for Ms. Chafin?
Okay, give me a chance to unmute. No, I'm familiar with where the property is located. Is the request due to a structure being placed on the property that was left off the original law amendment?
Yes, sir. Ms. Jacobs came to us early this year and expressed the desire to place a new commercial building behind the existing beauty parlor to store some of her floral arrangements and expand that side of the business. And when we looked at it, we realized that the backside actually was still zoned R32 family. And so when we looked, we realized that that piece, for whatever reason, had been left out of the initial request.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I agree with that. Of course, I'll have to wait until last for the motion. Let's not get ahead of ourselves here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bolden. Ms. Fitcher, do you have any questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. So I get that the, I think it was for me, the overarching thing here is that it was inadvertently left out, and so it makes sense. The zoning change makes sense. I think the only point of concern for me is that it's the future land use and it not fitting within the comprehensive plan. I absolutely get that that's not meant to, like you mentioned, dictate a parcel-by-parcel decision. But at some point, if we're not using that as a guide, right? Like, then we lose sight of the comprehensive planner of the future land use to a point to where, like, why do we even have it, right? And so my question is, how are we, how are we doing that balance, right? How are we making sure that while we don't allow it to dictate parcel-by-parcel, we do allow it to guide bigger picture?
So the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2003, and so it is due for an update. And I know. and I know there's been some conversations amongst council about going through that process and updating the future land use map and some other sections of the ordinance, but the comprehensive plan itself, while it has the future land use map that kind of visually shows and illustrates, here's where we plan for these general areas to develop, it also speaks to where those land uses should be developed in relation to each other. So it speaks to single-family development next to commercial, commercial next to industrial, and the relationship of those land uses and how they're developed in regards to access, to compatibility, to adequate infrastructure. So, you know, I think we, it's still a valuable tool, because in general, I think a lot of the areas on the future land use map, as far as what we initially planned for back in 2003, still hold true, but then we have to look at the broader picture and say, all right, well, how does this fit into the broader overarching goals of the comprehensive plan as far as neighborhood integrity, neighborhood preservation, economic development, things of that nature? And so I think in the, in the next, in the next year, we probably will be coming forward with some recommendations for some updates, maybe not the future land use plan as, future land use map as a whole, but maybe looking at areas holistically and saying, okay, you know, the southeast quadrant of the city, how much development has taken place since 2003 when we planned this area, and maybe we just look at it from that perspective. So I think, I think it still holds true, it's still valid, it's still valuable. You know, when we look at these requests, we do look at them, you know, in a more holistic view and try not to rely solely on the future land use map, because there's other things to take into consideration, but in that regard, I think, in the broad scheme of things, it does need to be updated, and we will be working on that in the next coming year. Does that make sense? Is that your question?
Yes, you did a good job.
Okay, okay, good.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Anderson?
I do not have any particular questions on this. I'm familiar with the area, and it is a very mixed-use area, and obviously this seems to be just cleaning up a little oversight in the zoning change previously, so I don't have any particular questions.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. So, and I had my question answered earlier, so thank you, Ms. Chafin, for that good explanation. So Chair is, oh, first of all, I need to ask if it is a public hearing. Do we have anyone, and I'll ask our city secretary, do we have anyone that wants to speak for or against this, for this public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no one speaking for or against, the public hearing is now closed, and Chair will entertain a motion.
Well, I will make a motion amending the boundaries of a zoning district within the city of Nacogdoches from R3 to B1 local business or property consisting of R1, 2 acres, Lot 1, 2 Block 3, City Block 53 of the Cleaver subdivision, to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve this item, amending the boundaries. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will move on to agenda item number seven, which is our second public hearing for this evening. Consider an ordinance amending the boundaries of a zoning district within the city from R4. Go ahead, Ms. Chafin.
All right, let me share my screen. All right, this next item is a request to rezone approximately 0.8 acres located at 1102 Logan's Port Street from R2 single-family to R4 multifamily. The property is located on the east side of Logan's Port, of Logan's Port Street, just south of McConacres Park. The property is zoned, sorry, excuse me, the property is developed as a single-family residence, and the applicant, Ms. RJ Bohack, does propose to develop the property with duplexes. The area includes a mix of both high and low-density residential zoning districts, including R1 and R2 single-family, R32 family, and R4 multifamily zoning. The R4 multifamily zoning district is intended for higher-density residential areas, which may contain a mix of both single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. The surrounding developed land uses include single-family residences, vacant land, and McConacres Park to the north. The request is compatible with zoning in the area and should not adversely affect any of the adjacent land uses. The future land use map does designate this area as single-family, which is, again, described as your conventional detached dwellings, and again, as I mentioned earlier, while the property is designated as single-family, it's always, again, relevant to consider the predominant user zoning in the area when reviewing these types of requests, which in this case does include a mix of both low and high-density residential zoning districts. In addition to the future land use map, again, it's also relevant to determine whether the request is in otherwise keeping with the broader goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. This rezoning request is in response to current needs for housing and therefore does fall within the goals, specifically the goal to encourage growth inward, which is described as long-term growth in appropriate areas to achieve efficient, diverse, and balanced pattern of land uses. Some of the targeted objectives of this goal include encouraging infill development where appropriate, planning for a mix of land use types based on desired location, density, and pattern of development, and providing growth where adequate infrastructure already exists. This rezoning request will be an infill development that will provide a balance of land uses in the area, while also providing a variety of housing types to serve the needs of Nacogdoches residents. And in this regard, again, while the area isn't designated for multifamily, the request is in otherwise keeping with the broader goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. Again, when reviewing an application for zone change, the following conditions, as outlined on your screen, shall be considered. These include, again, compatibility with adjacent land uses, providing for orderly growth and development, ensuring adequate infrastructure such as utilities, roads, and drainage, the design of drives and parking, prevention of nuisances, lighting, landscaping, and the proposed use being in accordance with the comprehensive plan. So, in conclusion, based on the findings outlined in the staff report, again, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning request and finds that it meets the review criteria as outlined before. This item was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission's regular meeting on August 10th, and the commission did recommend approval unanimously, and the applicant, Mr. RJ Bohack, is also in attendance if he should have any questions. I'm going to exit my screen now and stop sharing, so be available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Since this is also a public hearing, I would like to ask our city secretary if we have anyone that has joined that wants to speak for or against this issue?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, hearing now closed, and we'll start with Ms. Fisher. Do you have any questions or comments about the zoning change?
Yes, Mayor, I do. So, I have a few of them. I think the first has to do with the same question slash concern that I had with this previous zoning change about it, again, not being compatible with future land use, or not, sorry, not compatible, but not according to what the future land use in the comprehensive plan says. Sorry, I have for now. So, I get that, that that needs updating, but given the consideration of what the land is currently being used as, there isn't, it isn't zoned multifamily in the area, or what were you saying about that? Because you said that it's compatible with current land use, but I don't, I didn't see multifamily zoning in the area.
Yes, so it's, the future land use plan is single-family, and let me just share my screen again, so that way I can pull up the presentation. All right, so the slide that you see now, this is a zoning map. It's a side-by-side comparison of the existing zoning in the area on the left, and then on the right is what the area would look like if the request was approved. And so you see on the, on the right side of Logan's Port Street is primarily R2 single-family, and then along Martinsville Street, where the property backs up to, is R4. Directly across the street on Logan's Port, directly across Logan's Port Street is R4 multifamily and R32 family. And so there is R4 within the immediate vicinity. It's not, you know, necessarily adjacent, but it is very close. And so, you know, staff thinks that the zone change and the development of duplexes will be consistent with the zoning in the area based on, based on what's already there today.
Are the, are you referring to the apartments across from the park? Is that what that is?
No, this area here, I don't know if, right, my mouse, I don't think that's actually, not sure that's actually developed today, oh, here. So there's actually a number of structures in this area that are also legal non-conforming, which means the structure that's on the ground, what's developed, doesn't match the zoning district. And so I think this area right here is actually vacant today, and then there's a mix of high-density and medium-density single-family, and I believe here is that multifamily apartment complex that you were referring to earlier.
And what qualifies as, what qualifies as high-density?
High-density according to the comprehensive plan and the future, sorry, the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance are multifamily structures, and multifamily structures are defined as a structure with three or more dwelling units, and so multifamily could be a single triplex, it could be a fourplex. Multifamily also allows for single-family and two-family development, so you could have a multifamily-zoned property, and it could have a mix of, of single-family structures and duplexes and triplexes all on the same lot, and it's still considered high-density because you have multiple dwelling units on the same lot versus your traditional single-family where you have one structure on a single lot being served by a single point of street access.
Okay, so if I, just make sure if I understand you correctly, then the reason that we're saying that it, that it is high-density is because even though there might not already be multifamily structures, there will be maybe one single dwelling and one, one single-family and one double-family dwelling on the same lot. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, so, yes, the properties that you see that are zoned are for, several of them are developed with single-family uses, but they could be developed today with duplexes, with triplexes, with, with multiple single-family structures on those same lots, and some of them are small enough that the density is equivalent to some of what we see in some of our higher-density developments. And so as far as the units per acre versus just, you know, the structure type itself, some of these areas do reflect more of a, more of a higher-density residential development because you have a larger concentration of units within a smaller area.
But it more speaks to what could be developed versus what is, what is there right now?
Yes, there's, there's several properties in the area that are already zoned to allow multifamily by right there today, and so based on that, based on, you know, what's entitled there today, this zoning would be consistent with some of those other existing zoning districts.
Okay, and then one more thing, and then I'll leave you alone. Could you explain the, the infill thing to me a little bit more?
Yes, so infill development is where you have development that is within, or surrounded by areas that are already developed. So when we think of, when we think of greenfield, we think of areas that are, that are clear, that are green, that don't have any infrastructure, they don't have any street network. They are, they are brand-new property that requires all of the infrastructure to be installed before you can develop anything. Infill is where you go into an existing neighborhood or an area that's already been developed, that already has street access, that already has water, it already has sewer, and you're basically filling in those vacant properties in those areas. And so it's, it's something that encouraged, that is encouraged because it's considered, you're using the resources that you already have versus building new and spreading yourself out. So, so the idea is to, is to be more resourceful and sustainable by utilizing those, the infrastructures that already exist today.
I lied to you, I actually do have one more. That, that makes sense, thank you. Has this, has this request for a zone change been brought before, do you know?
Not that I know of.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
I do not have any questions at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden.
I do know that neighborhood well, so I can clarify any questions that may be out there. I grew up, I grew up a block away, so.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bolden?
I just, I don't have any issues with R3 to R4, and even basically R2 to R4, but was there any objections from any of the residents in that neighborhood?
Staff didn't, didn't receive any contacts regarding the request, but Mr. Bohack, I think he received some contacts from some of the residents in the area. RJ, could you answer Mr. Bolden's question? You'll have to unmute yourself.
Yes.
There we go, can you hear me now?
Yes, that sounds good. Right ahead.
Wonderful, well, thank you for having me, Madam Mayor and fellow city council members. Yeah, so I had one or two neighbors call me, just because they knew me personally and saw who the application had made, and I just explained to them what I was planning on doing, and once they were kind of educated on what my plans were, they were perfectly fine with, with what was going on, and so that was the only thing, it wasn't anything of any negative or whatsoever, it was just a, just, you know, kind of informational.
Thank you. Elena, but we did send out information to the residents within a certain area of the property, right?
Yes, we, we sent out property owner notices to everyone within 200 feet of the subject property.
Thank you. I'm good, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Okay, if there are no further questions, and we have, oh, yes, go right ahead, Ms. Fisher.
The 200 square foot, what it, how many, do you have any idea? I saw it on the, on one of the slides, how many residents that, residences that includes?
Yes, that included 15 notices to property owners.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Chair is now ready to entertain a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve item seven as it is written. Do I need to read it all?
No, that, that is sufficient, thank you.
Okay.
And we need a second, please.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve agenda item number seven as it, as presented. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we have our third public hearing for the evening. Agenda item number eight, consider an ordinance approving a request for a specific use permit. So, Ms. Chafin, you're up again.
All right, thank you. This request is for approximately 1.9 acres located on the west and north sides of Cardinal Street. The properties are currently zoned B2 general business, which does allow for a mini warehouse storage facility with approval of a specific use permit. This SUP process allows staff, the commission, and council the opportunity to review and impose any conditions necessary on such development. the opportunity to review and impose any conditions necessary on such development. This development includes three phases. The first phase consists of two existing structures located at 1717 Cardinal Street. These are shown as Buildings A and B on the attached site plan exhibit. When this phase was constructed in 1984, warehouse storage was listed as a permitted land use into general business zoning district. However, it wasn't until 1998 that the zoning ordinance was updated and mini warehouse storage was actually defined as a separate land use that required a specific use permit. So this development is considered grandfathered in because of its age, but it's included in the request in an attempt to bring the property into compliance with the current zoning ordinance. The second phase of the development includes an office and storage building located at 1605 Cardinal Street. This was built in 2007 and then expanded in 2015. And it's depicted here on the aerial map exhibit on your screen. And this phase is primarily used for office. And the third phase is a recently constructed storage facility located at 1711 Cardinal Street. This is shown as Building C on the attached site plan exhibit. Permit plans for this phase were submitted and approved to the inspections Department in October 2019. And during that time, there were some staff transitions happening in the planning department. So unfortunately, the zoning was inadvertently missed during the review process. And then staff uncovered it during inspections for final certificate of occupancy. So we are retroactively requesting approval for the SUP for, for all three phases, phase one, two, and three. The surrounding area is zoned B2 general business with R4 multifamily zoning located to the east and south across Cardinal Street. The area is predominantly developed with commercial and multifamily uses. And Cardinal Street does intersect with North University Drive and East R Avenue, both of which are designated as major arteries and primarily used for commercial traffic. The subject property and surrounding area is designated as commercial on the future land use map. Properties to the east across Cardinal Street designated as multifamily. And the, the future land use map presentation is consistent with the current zoning of the property. The conditions for approval of a specific use permit are the same as those outlined for zone change requests, which primarily speak to the, to the design and the compatibility of requested land uses as they relate to the adjacent property. Mini warehouse storage facilities are distinct from your typical commercial warehouse facilities because these are actually individual self-contained units that are leased to individuals for self-service storage of personal property. Whereas your typical commercial warehouse is used for storage of goods and materials for sale in a business that's located on the property or for a commercial distribution. So mini warehouses is more of a, of a service, whereas your traditional commercial storage is, is more of a commercial industrial use. And generally, these facilities generate very little traffic in compare, in comparison to some of the other uses that are permitted in the B2 general business district. And you have very few employees on site, so they don't generate a lot of crowds or customers at one time. I said it previously, phase one was developed in 1984, prior to the adoption of our current development standards that you'll find in our zoning ordinance today, including outdoor lighting and commercial street landscaping requirements. So this means that the development is essentially what we call legal non-conforming or grandfathered in. However, if there's any additions or renovations that are made to the property that, that trigger those thresholds that are outlined in the zoning ordinance, then the property would have to be brought into compliance with all of our current development standards. Phase two of the development located at 1605 Cardinal Street was constructed in 2007 and then expanded in 2015. And it was permitted to meet all of our current commercial standards. So it, it does comply with outdoor lighting and our commercial landscaping requirements. The phase is primarily used for office space and those office hours are between Monday through Friday. The recently constructed phase located at 1711 Cardinal Street was also permitted to meet current standards. This facility does have an office that operates Monday through Friday, nine to five. The facility is gated, however, those gated access hours are, are not limited. So in conclusion, staff does find that the request does meet the review criteria as outlined in the zoning ordinance. We do recommend approval. We find that the, that the request that land use is low-intensity in nature and is compatible with the adjacent land uses. This item was heard at the August 10th Planning and Uncommissioned Meeting, and they did recommend approval of the request unanimously. Unfortunately, Mr. Mike Libram, he was not able to attend this evening, but I did speak to him before the meeting. And hopefully I can answer any questions that you have on his behalf. And I will exit my screen now, so.
Okay, thank you. So let's open the public hearing and ask our City Secretary, do we have any one speaking for or against?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. We will close the public hearing. And council members, let's start with Mr. Anderson.
I don't have any particular questions on this.
Okay, great, Mr. Bolden?
I don't have a question or comment on this particular issue, no.
Ms. Fisher?
Now I'll give Elena a break on this one.
It's consistent with the future land use map.
I have one question. I, I noticed on your drawing, I saw water, water, water. And so since it's been there with all of the water we had early in the spring, I assume that plan was efficient, right?
Yes, so those arrows indicate the direction of a water flow. Immediately behind that newer facility is a, is a area that is being utilized kind of like as, as a regional detention for all three sites. And so that's just indicating that that's the direction the water flows into the intended source of, of the detention for the area. And so as we understand it, it's serving the purpose and it, and it's working. And we did get one phone call from a neighbor with, just expressing some general concerns about drainage in the area. And we were able to put them in contact with our engineering department. And so they're working with that property owner one-on-one to try to address those issues that he's having on site. But unfortunately, you know, there are several areas in town where anytime you have a large rain event, regardless of how much detention or drainage you, you have, you have issues. And so sometimes it's, it's an issue of maintenance, sometimes it's an issue of, you know, you know, there's, there's just nothing you can do based on how much rain that we get. But I think that particular contact was more of an isolated incident and we're working with them to try to resolve their issues. But to answer your question, yes. Their detention and drainage is working.
Well, it, it is on a hill, and I know there's a steep drop-off at the edge of the 17 location. So thank you very much. If there are no further questions, Chair will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve item number eight as written.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve agenda item number eight as it is written. If there are no further, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Chafin.
Thank you.
Agenda item number nine, 2020-2021 budget workshop. And we will hear from Ms. Kerbo. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Let me get out here and present, let's see, my screen's going crazy, hold tight, there we go. Okay, can y'all see that now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay. Tonight, we're going to just take a, a, a second look at what we had talked about earlier this month at the, at the fourth meeting. This is going to be somewhat of a condensed presentation because this again is a workshop for y'all tonight. So I'm going to hit the high points of the budget and then, then give you the opportunity to, to, to discuss whatever that you, you might feel we need to. This is, just as some items to be aware of that are either included or excluded from the, from the upcoming budget. This budget presented to you includes approximately, let's see, six positions that were, department heads agreed that it was a possibility that we could forego, okay, that we could forego filling those positions for one fiscal year in order to try to alleviate some, some strain on the general fund budget. And those would be reassessed in the 21-22 budget cycle. We also discussed a little bit about the funding to, from general fund to the Economic Development Fund. We started that three years ago and we were funding it about $150,000 per year. And then in year two, we doubled it. Year three, we added another $150,000. And this year, as we got to looking at that, that is not going to be a sustainable increase. We actually have about a million dollars in that fund currently. So I had discussed with Nedco and Larissa the, the possibility of us funding that back at the year one level and continuing that forward. She felt like at this point that that was, the million dollars was a good, good nest deck for us. And so this budget proposes a $150,000 transfer instead of the $450,000 that was included in last year's budget. Again, we did not thankfully have to do any type of premium increase on health insurance either for the employee-paid dependent coverage or for the city-funded employee coverage. So that was, that was a blessing for us this year because those healthcare costs, I know y'all understand, are, are extremely expensive sometimes. So with that, we were able to fund a new self-insured dental insurance plan that will allow the city to pay for all full-time employees a basic dental insurance going forward. They will still be responsible for paying for dependent coverage, but all full-time employees can opt-in to that dental coverage. And that will be provided as a, as a new benefit for, for the employees going forward. Once again, year five of our previously adopted rate increase will be implemented this year. This is the last year of that. And so we will, you know, if you remember, it, it was quite an extensive rate increase in the very beginning. This year, there's very, very few things that we're just kind of, the cleaning up the, a couple of items. But it, it was, it was much necessary to, to phase that in over a five-year plan. And so this will, will wrap that up. We also created a sanitation administration department. We had a couple of employees that previously had worked in the Public Works Administration Department. And upon review of their job duties, determined that, you know, the majority excess of 85 to 90% of their duties were the sanitation department-related. And so we did create that department and transfer those two employees, which there again helped alleviate a little bit of the strain on the general fund. Another thing that we will, will be doing next year, I know last, if y'all recall several months ago, y'all allowed us to contract with a firm to, to actually do a salary survey and a compensation plan. And they have given us some preliminary numbers on that. They still have a little bit of work to do with our direction, but we're hopeful that at some point next fiscal year, we'll able to bring a, a good plan for, for a way to get some of our, well, all of our employees within market. And so it will be rather expensive, so there, there may be the necessity to phase that in over, over a couple of years period. But that is something that we currently are planning. Now, if you recall, I emailed y'all, I think last Friday, with an updated version of the budget. And included, the only changes really that were included, besides a, a separate page that we, we're required now to reflect expenditures for legislative services and legal ads, is we actually went in and line item increased for this implementation of the salary survey and compensation plan. So those funds are included in the budget now. And so just wanted to make you aware of some of the things that, that we had discussed, you know, overall for the budget. I'm going to show you a couple of slides. I took out all of the, the fun graphs, but this is just some of the one-time capital expenditures and CIP items that are included in this proposed budget. This is the general fund. You'll notice there's about a half a million dollars worth of capital equipment and about a half a million dollars in CIP items. We, our department heads were very gracious this year in actually really paring back their request for these particular items. We told them this is needs, not wants. And so for each one of these, they, they did a really good job of justifying why these needed to be placed in, in the budget. And so you'll see there, it's replacing the doors of the animal shelter. Our phone system upgrade, that is because our current phone system is hitting end-of-life. And so we really don't have a choice in order to, to continue that system. We've got to do some, some upgrades on that in the next fiscal year. We need some servers, of course, that's a, a constant, technology is, is rapidly changing. And then the fire department, we're going to spend about $200,000 refurbishing an engine and $84,000 for various gear for them. The CIP projects in the general fund is a city hall roof replacement and a normal street rehab of $250,000. And then Community Services has a handful of small projects. Actually, I don't have those on for me, I can tell you real quickly. That is continuing the parking lot repaving program for our parks. It also includes soccer drainage and a spring floor for athletics in the rec center. And so that makes up those, those miscellaneous items in the general fund. In the utility fund, we have an upgrade on our automated meter reading system in the water office. This is, we've been almost 12 years now with the AMR system. And so this will be our first really large upgrade as far as the collector stations have to be upgraded. This will give us the ability to basically two-way talk to the meters. And so even though the meters currently provide us hourly data, if someone comes in and wants to know what's happening right now on their meter, we can what you call ping it and find out what's going on at that point of, of customer service. And so that, that will be of a great benefit for us. And then two vehicles, both in wastewater and utility construction, those are trucks. And then CIP, there are various water, wastewater system improvements. These are well rehabs, water and sewer line replacements and, and the, and the like. And so this is a, this amount is about a typical CIP for utility annually. Nothing out of the ordinary there. Sanitation fund, the annual dumpsters and cart replacement fund. And that comes out of operations and that usually is around $100,000 a year to replace all the carts and dumpsters as needed. Then out of our depreciation account, we are going to be purchasing two new roll-off trucks. Normally, if you'll remember the last several years, every year we've tried to purchase two garbage trucks, actual, you know, side loads and front loads, one of each usually every year. This year, we've, we're in good shape with those. And so we have two roll-off trucks that need to be replaced. And so that's, they, they requested those in lieu of the, the residential trucks. And handheld GPS unit and two very large pieces of equipment for the landfill, a compactor and a track loader. Both of those are at end-of-life and, and need replacing. I'm, I'm going to go over this in my next item, but I wanted to, to bring this up as well. We've had a little bit of a change in our meeting calendar. And it is strictly because of new legislation that has come down specifically related to property tax adoption, but it, it affects the, the budget adoption as well. And so we wanted to add in here where these meetings were going to be located because there are some stipulations in the law that require us to have in-person meetings for a couple of these items. So of course tonight, we have the budget workshop. And then next, we're going to talk about proposing a tax rate. September the first, we'll have a virtual regular city council meeting. And then September the eighth, we are going to have an in-person meeting, except it will be at the recreation center this time. This is the one that will, will hold the public hearing for both budget and tax rate. This has been questioned back and forth all across the state. And the, and the governor has finally answered this with a final yes. This needs to be an in-person meeting because it's a public hearing on the tax rate. And so we have that set up. Then part of the new regulations are in the past, we were able to have a public hearing, one meeting, and adoption the next, which is a two week cycle for us. But part of the new legislation requires that the vote on the tax rate has to happen within seven days of the public hearing. So that necessitated a September fifteenth meeting for us to adopt the budget and the tax rate. Please keep in mind, this again will be in person, it will be at the rec center. And in order to adopt both of these, a super majority is required. September the twenty second will be another virtual regular city business meeting. So that's pretty much what I have for you tonight. So let me stop sharing this. And see if I can get back out of here. All right. And so at this point, I'm open for any questions, any comments that you have on the budget or or whatever, however you want to proceed with the workshop.
Okay, thank you. Let's start with Mr. Bolden. Do you have any questions or comments relating to the proposed budget?
Okay, well, I want to go back to the six positions reductions. Now, were the positions on the payroll as of when the start of the twenty nineteen twenty twenty budget?
The these are positions that were budgeted in the current year, but they're vacant. So these are all vacant positions currently that we are have chosen not to fill either this current year or next year. So this is a, this is does not affect any currently employed individual.
Okay, so we never had a person in that position?
No, we've had people in these position in the past. For instance, one of them.
Twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, we never had someone in that position during that time.
Two, three, I'm trying to think if any of them had anybody at the beginning of the fiscal year. I don't think. I can remember, I think they have been vacant for quite some time.
Okay, I I I understand. But just for a side question on that, if we had, do we actually need employees in those position in order to continue to provide quality service to our citizens?
Well, that that was a question that we posed to all the department heads and said, take a look at your vacant positions. If you think that your current work structure and your operations can withstand us postponing that fulfillment of those positions, take a hard look and let us know. And so a couple of these are at the court. One is an office assistant position in HR. Let's see, one is a vehicle maintenance mechanic at the garage. And so each of those department heads took took some time to go through their operations to determine if they could do without that position currently and for for the next fiscal year.
The only reason why I asked that question is, I mean, I know that budget is tight, but we also need to take a look at is we doing what we supposed to for the citizens of Nakadoches?
Right, right. Yeah, we we were, we were able to propose this without service reductions.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, sort of along the same lines, I really appreciate, one, all of the departments tightening their belt in that way. But two, you also, you presenting it to us in that way in that this is what we're doing and we need it and it is a need based not want. Because when we discuss, I don't want to get ahead of it. I know we're about to discuss the the tax rate. But when we discuss even, you know, quote unquote, small increases that might actually be a lot or or worry some some Nakadoches citizens, the the main question that comes to mind as well, are we doing everything that we can in the budget to be as frugal with expenses as possible? And you made that answer, at least to me, resoundingly clear. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. This was a very difficult year, and I know y'all get tired of me saying that. But this is, this is probably the first time in a long time that we have taken some of these steps to try to reduce. I I can't recall in my twenty three years us proposing to postpone filling some positions to try to to alleviate the strain on the general fund. So it is a different year, but yes, staff has done a very good job on trying to figure out ways to continue serving the public at at the basic level that we we can. And so thanks, thanks to them for making this this a possibility.
Okay, did you have anything else, Ms. Fisher?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I had one quick question. And before I ask that, I will say, Ms. Kerbo, I really appreciate your efforts and all staff's efforts. I know this has been a very difficult juggling act this year, more than possibly any other, to to make everything work within the confines of what we bring in. So I definitely appreciate that. And my question is just a really brief one. And, you know, I understand the need to to minimize that economic development transfer from what was originally proposed, you know, basically doubling it, tripling it year over year. Is there any plan to, as as revenues get back on online with what they would normally be, to reevaluate that and potentially go back to the original plan? Or is it just intended to to remain at that hundred fifty thousand dollars a year?
Actually, I have I've run a couple of scenarios. And so next year's budget cycle, we'll probably bring those to you. I don't know that it's ever going to be sustainable to incrementally increase it a hundred and fifty every year. Because at some point, we're putting millions over there. So the the increase, I think, is probably going to be a necessity at some point. I don't think we'll see it being a hundred and fifty. What I have kind of started with is we either do a hundred and fifty every year going forward, or we do a hundred and fifty one year, a hundred and seventy five the next, two hundred, and incrementally raise it as revenues allow. And so that will be something next year during the budget cycle that I'll bring to you. Do y'all want to stay at the one fifty? Do you want to try to raise it to one seventy five, two hundred? And so that'll be an option for next year and going forward, depending on revenues. Y'all have that ability to change that that amount as needed.
Okay, so your your intent is to kind of reevaluate that on a.
That is probably the the biggest thing that's going to be happening. Over the next year, two years, we're going to be doing lots of reevaluating. So things that we've addressed this year, everything's going to be looked at even more so in depth next year just to make sure that we are back on track to get to where we were pre COVID.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further questions, we appreciate you, Ms. Kerbo, and your staff and of course, every employee that is making some sacrifices. And we will move to agenda item number ten.
Okay.
The council, and for agenda item number ten, that is on the proposed tax rate. So go right ahead.
All right, let me share my screen again. All right, can y'all see that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so as I was speaking of earlier, the the legislation that was passed last year in Senate Bill Two greatly changed the way property taxes are calculated and adopted and implemented throughout the state. One of those things, of course, is the reduction in the limit of the tax increase that that we can propose. Previously, it was an eight percent was our limit before it had to be a voter approved rate. Now that limit is at three and a half percent. A couple of these items were not presented to you last council meeting because we found them between now and last council meeting. Gary Woods made a great catch. He was working on his advertisement for the public hearing on the tax rate and realized that this day has completely changed that advertising directive to him. And in that, it records a section where we have to have a record vote of city council on consideration of the proposed tax rate. Now, what this does is just basically goes on record and said, the budget that we have built and the tax rate that we are proposing to you is blank. And so that is going to be included in the public hearing. This is not voting to approve the tax rate. That will come September the fifteenth. This is just a record vote for us to proceed with a proposed tax rate. And so that's a new thing that that was created by Senate Bill Two. Also, I mentioned earlier, now one of the new provisions is now we have a seven day limit between the public hearing and the actual adoption of the tax rate. And so that's a, that's a new item as well. Again, new terminology, they changed this. And it is what was once known as the effective tax rate is now known as the no new revenue tax rate. And the rollback tax rate is now the voter approval tax rate. So those are kind of a summation of of what changes took place because of Senate Bill Two. We have an assist value certified role from the appraisal district year this year of one, a little over one point seven eight billion dollars. This includes nine point six million in new property added to the tax role. Our prior year tax rate for twenty nineteen twenty twenty is sixty one point four cents per hundred dollar valuation. The calculated no new revenue tax rate will be sixty one point six cents per hundred dollar valuation. And the calculated voter approval tax rate is point six three three eight four per hundred dollar valuation. The proposed tax rate that you will be voting tonight to consider is the sixty three cents per hundred dollar valuation. And that is split between operations and maintenance and debt. As you can see, our debt load for next year is a little over one point three million. This property tax rate generates three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars in new new revenue. And of that sixty thousand dollars is from new construction. So the the actual rate increase itself generates three hundred and four thousand dollars for us. Just as an example, we always give you the average home value. This comes from the appraisal district. They look at this every few years. In Nakadoches, a hundred and eight thousand dollars is an average home value. This is before exemptions, homestead exemptions. Under the proposed tax rate of sixty three cents per hundred dollar valuation, the annual tax liability for that homeowner will be five hundred and forty four dollars and thirty two cents. Under the no new revenue tax rate, that would be five hundred and thirty two dollars and twenty two cent tax liability. And you'll note notice that this is an increase in taxes of twelve dollars and ten cents annually for this homeowner. Now, this will increase, of course, exponentially based on the value of the home. But this is based on just your average. This shows you what the actual tax increase will be to the average home value citizen in Nakadoches. We we've done this in the past, and and I apologize. Normally, we try to compare a tax liability to multiple things across the city. I really honestly forgot to do this this year, and and Mario reminded me today that that we needed to provide this to y'all. Sometimes we, if you if you'll remember in the past, I'm not sure we did it last year, but we'll we'll show you an average cable bill or an average cellphone bill, just as a comparison. This year, we we have have done an average utility bill. This is based on, I think, right at five thousand gallons consumption. Our our average fluctuates between five and eight thousand gallons. So this will show you, it's not a minimum bill. There there is some usage there. And this equates, this is for water sewer sanitation and our new street maintenance fund. This equates to about a thousand and twenty dollars annually. And so you can see where an average utility bill, uh oh, let me see, oh, I'm so sorry. What am I doing? Let me go back. So what I was wanting to show you was that, well, I'd be dang, hold on. What I wanted to show you was to, as a comparison, and we normally do that, what an average city tax liability compared to some other, the other utilities and and constant type bills that that citizens have. And as you can see here, under the proposal, it's about five hundred and forty four dollars per year. And that compares to about a thousand and twenty for an average utility bill. Again, here is is the the calendar for for September, including those requirements that we have the public hearing in person. Again, it will be at the recreation center. And another reminder that the September fifteenth meeting does require a super majority of council to vote to adopt the budget and the tax rate. So I will be happy to answer any questions that y'all have on the proposed tax rate.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's start with Ms. Fisher?
No, ma'am, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
I do not have any either.
Okay, and Mr. Bolden?
Just one question. The three hundred thousand dollars that property tax increase would bring, what value does that bring to the bu- budget?
As in what what we could do with the three hundred thousand dollars, what what the, am I understanding what you're? Just as an example, in the past, last year, year before last, we had a three percent COLA. And the general fund, in order to fund a three percent COLA for general fund employees, is approximately three hundred thousand dollars. So in the the scope of things, those amounts, I know they sound very, very high. But at the end of the day, three hundred thousand dollars only does a handful of things. So our our compensation plan that we've built into the budget, we have estimated four hundred thousand dollars as a starting point for general funds portion of the salary survey and compensation plan. And so I I think you'll remember last year, our property tax rate increase generated a little over seven hundred thousand dollars additional revenue. And so this is the, this is the impact of those reductions in property taxes. And so I, you know, we don't, you can't buy a fire truck for three hundred thousand dollars. And so, you know, if that's if that's the, if that's where you're going, what can we do with three hundred thousand dollars? You know, a fire truck is going to be about a half a million dollars. And so if that gives you an idea of what three hundred thousand actually can accomplish in the general fund.
Yeah, I I think I may have asked that question the wrong way. I wanted to back up. If we don't set a new property tax rate, what item on the budget items would we not be able to cover?
Okay, so there again, we have included about four hundred thousand dollars in the general fund for the salary survey and the compensation plan. And so that would be one item that could be considered. Of course, there there's always the the possibility that that each department kid could take a hard look at at employees. I mean, seventy nine percent of our general fund is personnel cost. So there are things like that. There are the, you know, oh, man, let me think of of what.
No, you've defined it pretty well.
Okay, okay, I'm just thinking things that are that about.
Oh, excuse me.
Oh, this is Mario. You know, maybe one other thing, too. I think part of the, just looking at the budget and and again, I've kind of been grilling Pam all week long last week, just getting familiar with our budget going forward. I think one of the other issues, too, is we are estimating some lower revenues in regards to fines. Just because, again, whether it's just because of the activity, we've got in some cases, areas within the city that have not been able to operate fully. And so we've had to reduce revenues that normally we would collect through other means. And so part of that increase is more offset. Part of that increase is to help offset some of those other decreases in revenues that just, we just don't believe we'll be able to to collect because of the pandemic. We hope that as things normalize, those revenues will come back. But right now, we can't rely on those revenues. And so part of that increase is to help stabilize those revenues that just aren't available through other means.
And and I truly understand that. But as citizens, and and I'm one of them, too. But as citizens, and and I'm one of them, too, is that if if you do a property tax rate increase, they would want to know where their money has been spent. And one other question is, now, if we tonight vote that we consider a tax rate increase, is there going to be budget? Because this is not found that that would happen. Are we going to have, say, a budget with or without presented to us with the tax rate increase?
The the budget as you have today includes this rate. But as I said, tonight, you're voting on proposing a considering a proposed rate. On the time that you actually vote, if that changes, if the wishes of the of the city council changes, then yes, we will, we will change the budget to reflect whatever tax rate that you that you propose for us, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, are there, do any, do council members, do you, have you come up with any other questions that you have? No, okay. Because this is a record vote, we're going to proceed. I will go ahead and make a motion. It will need to be seconded. And then I will call your name and ask for your vote individually instead of as a group. So I move to propose for consideration a property tax rate of .6300 per $100 valuation, which is greater than the no new revenue rate and would result in a property tax increase. May I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. And I will call your names. Let's go ahead with you, Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
Aye.
And Mr. Bolden?
Aye.
And as Mayor Brophy, I also vote aye. Motion passes. Thank you so much. We're going to move to agenda item number 11, receive Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation annual report. Hello, Ms. Philpott, how are you today?
I'm doing well, thank you, Mayor. Hello, Mayor and Council. This is Larissa Philpott, your economic development director and also your president and CEO of the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation. I am going to share my screen. There we go. Can y'all see that?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Let me try it again. I apologize. Can we see that now?
No.
I see you.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm sending you help.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and begin. You you do have this in your packet so that you do have the information in front of you. First, I just wanted to start out and say thank you for approving the contract during your consent agenda. Just to to call it out for the audience and to remind everyone that that is a $95,000 cash investment in Nedco, along with about a $13,000 in-kind investment in office space and and maintenance support and things like that. So that's a total of $108,000 investment that you make in Nedco. Your $108,000 is matched almost on a two-to-one basis from the community, from Nacogdoches County, from the school district, from SFA, and then private community members, private businesses in the community, for a total budget of just over $308,000. Got Matt here, he's going to fix my screen for me. That's okay. For some reason, this computer's not letting me share right now. So that's okay. That's okay.
Okay.
You can see it now.
What we can see is, there it goes. Okay.
Okay, great. My apologies. So what I was saying was, your $108,000 investment is matched in the community two-to-one for a little over a $300,000 budget, and that was included in your packet. This is a unique investment. Nedco is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, so it's it's not a private organization. It is a it is a nonprofit organization. We do obtain an audit every year and provide you with a copy of that audit and that budget. Our funding model is such that we do have to charge a membership fee to raise our budget and to carry out our mission. This is pretty rare, but there are other private EDCs in Texas. Tyler, for example, is is another one in the state of Texas nearby. So just some of our highlights from the year. I mentioned a few of these at my mid-year report, but just to touch on them again. The first one on that list there, I'm very proud of. It was our first manufacturing day. Importantly, this was a joint Nacogdoches and Angelina County effort. Nedco continues to foster that relationship between economic development entities in Nacogdoches and Angelina County. We had over 200 kids. We hope to, fingers crossed, that we will be able to have that again this year in the spring. I know our East Texas Manufacturing Alliance partners are excited about that. Our entrepreneurship academy, which I wish Councilmember Hens could be on the meeting tonight. He is a huge part of our entrepreneurship academy. We had 17 current and future businesses. It's always a great time. They, we get great remarks on that from the community. We, this year, entered into our fifth year of administering the Kiwi Grant for SFA. We, I'm proud this year to say that to date, we've administered more than $300,000 in grant funding for the development of this crop. And you've all heard me say this, that, you know, agriculture is such an important part of our economy. And so this is a great way to grow that agricultural sector in our economy, to develop a new cash crop. We continue to advocate for the development of I-69. We heard a little bit of that in Kelly Barnes's presentation. We are excited that our I-69 projects remained in Tex-Dox Unified Transportation Plan. We also increased our small business development workshops this year with timely topics. I know I've seen several of you at at some of those workshops. I would say the highest attendance program was a program on emergency preparedness that we held in the late winter, which had more than 200 attendees. We held it at the Expo Center. And we basically covered everything from how to prepare your business for a fire to an active shooter. And so I think that was well received and useful to our to our community members. You've already heard me talk about the Industry Attraction Plan a few months ago. That really created the framework for our work plan that we're developing. We are now in the process of developing very specific tasks and goals designed to support the initiatives in that in that plan. And that plan is, just a reminder, is focused on which industries Nedco should recruit. Just as a reminder, that recruitment does not always look like going to a trade show and coming home with a business. Ned, economic development is a long game. And so based on that attraction plan, we really, as a community, need to focus on workforce development and attraction issues. The specific, once we have developed our our workforce to a higher level and we're attracting and we're retaining those SFA graduates, then our specific business recruiting becomes so much more efficient and effective. So we're excited to continue work on that. So we had, we had great momentum. And then, as happened to everybody, COVID hit. So this next section is about March 2020 to today and the foreseeable future. Really, we are focused on business triage. And so that means something different every day. At one point, we had Mary Frances Bradford and Haley Chapman in our office answering the the COVID hotline for local businesses, trying to figure out if they're allowed to be open or closed, helping people get connected with the SBA and their bankers in order to make sure that they can apply for idle loans and the payroll protection plan loans. We even, at one point, connected somebody with a with leak container so that they could bottle hand sanitizer for our local businesses. So it was truly something very different every day. We have continued to do some educational webinars. We just recently did one on leadership in crisis. I know that our businesses have had to pivot in the way that they are doing business and and change. And they've had to to ask their employees to perform different roles. And so that was something that came up. As well as, in a survey that we did, some of our small businesses asked for assistance, financial assistance, just how do we survive? How do we get this payroll protection program loan forgiven? How do we, I have to completely change my business model? How do I need to go about doing that with my banker that I have my small business loan through? So thank you to Commercial Bank, Jimmy Mize, and Scott Borger facilitated that for us. We're also providing weekly information during the chamber's COVID response call. And I think that's been well received. We we did do one virtual job fair. We're in the process of developing a second virtual job fair, which I'm hoping will be even more well-attended. We're looking to have maybe some virtual interview rooms and some neat things like that. So we're we're working on that still. From an advocacy standpoint, you know, it's it's changed. The executive orders and the governor's orders seem to change pretty quickly. And so we have worked with Kelly Barnes and Hillco to advocate for our businesses and just receiving clear guidelines and and as much information as possible about how they can do business. Just a little bit of information that I think is interesting as far as that payroll protection program you heard me mention. Nacogdoches businesses received more than $50 million in this payroll protection program loan. And we've been told that that still is not quite enough. That infusion did assist businesses through that first, that crucial first three months of of COVID. And now we we are needing some additional assistance. Hopeful that that will come through from Congress. These next few slides, I'm going to fly through. I included them in here because I traditionally do, and I kind of wanted to keep them in here for continuity. But I will just say this, that it appears that the community in pre-COVID, because some of these are lagging indicators that take a few years to come back out, that we were improving on our statistics that we use as metrics for how the community is doing. And if anybody wants me to go back and look at those, I certainly can go back and discuss them. So this slide here is a new slide, and this is our current economic indicator. I update this every couple of weeks. As you heard from Sheri Morgan, unfortunately, our hotel tax is down about 42%. Our sales tax is the anomaly in all of this. Pam and I have, it's a happy scream coming from City Hall recently. It's because sales tax was up again. And this is a true indicator of what happens when our residents shop NAC first. They weren't spending their money in Houston or Dallas or Lufkin. They're spending their money here. And so that has really supported our 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 healthy sales tax numbers. Our unemployment numbers, this is not the unemployment rate. This is the number of jobs in the city of Nacogdoches. That is down about 8.9%. We are, instead of going off of just the traditional unemployment rate that you see, we started looking at the number of jobs because our population has fluctuated somewhat with students moving in and moving out. And so we really wanted to track the actual number of jobs that people are offering. And as of this month, it is still down 8.9%. Just some other indicators, some positive notes. We have seen gains in our home sales. Our home sales are were, seem to be doing incredibly well. If RJ Bohack was still on the line, I think he could 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 support that. Ed Poole is our real estate advisor at Nedco, and he has said that they they've had really good home sales the last couple of months. Our manufacturing production is still strong. They've had some supply issues, but they are still able to keep things going. And we're very lucky to have such a strong manufacturing base in that most of those businesses were declared essential. And so they were allowed to to maintain their operations and keep people working and keep producing things that bring money back to Nacogdoches. This is a really interesting slide that Dr. Kulyatsev at SFA provided me with a website that tracks credit and debit card spending. And so this is specific to Nacogdoches County. And you can kind of see the fluctuations there in how much our spending has changed since the very beginning of the slide there, since the beginning of the year. So as a as a whole for the year, we are up 5.7% as for consumer spending in Nacogdoches County. The interesting, the next interesting slide, though, is is definitely more disappointing. And it shows the percent change in small business revenue. That unfortunately is down 58%. And so that number is is what is indicating to me along with a business survey that we did, that our small businesses are still hurting and definitely need our continued support. So moving on to what we hope to do in 2020 and 2021. Of course, that Industry Attraction Plan that I mentioned, the implementation, the specific development of tasks, our community development. There are definitely tasks in that Industry Attraction Plan that talk about community development and quality of life issues. And so I'll be working with, hopefully, very closely with Elena, your city planner, to to work on those issues. Nedco's marketing assistant, Haley Chapman, has produced an excellent marketing plan that we will forward on to council very soon, as soon as we have it all prioritized. And that really, honestly, a lot of it is going to focus on marketing to workforce, not necessarily marketing to individual businesses, but marketing to potential employees and potential folks to move to Nacogdoches to bring their jobs here and and bring their businesses here. As I said before, we've kind of switched from a business attraction to a business survival mode to helping our small businesses stay open. We're going to try our hardest to have our entrepreneurship academy again this fall. We aren't 100% sure what that will look like. It might be virtual, it might be in person. But but we will definitely have one, it's too important. We're working hard collaborating with SFA on some of their major goals with potential reduction in their budget through the legislature. Some of their initiatives regarding working with industry, we've taken on and hopeful that we can help them find some funding outside of the traditional legislative funding. And then also continuing to advocate for I-69 and working on the I-69 consortium. We are just about to get kicked off on that with our partners here in Lufkin in the next couple of weeks. And I will definitely bring you a report on that as soon as that moves forward. I always like to remind you that when I say we, I mean Nedco, but I also mean the city, the county, the CVB, SFA, all of the folks seen here on this slide. Economic development is truly a group effort. And we don't do anything without any of our partners. And that's that's the neat thing about Nedco is it is truly a joint effort of the community. We all agree that the rising tide lifts all boats. And we have definitely seen that in the last six months or so, that everybody is pulling in where they can to to keep our small businesses afloat and to support our manufacturing operations, definitely, as they continue to support the country. And with that, I will stop sharing my slides and be happy to answer any questions anyone might have.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Anderson, it's your turn.
I do not have any questions right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden.
No, thanks for the presentation.
Okay, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, ma'am, and I apologize in advance for crying baby. She's really starting to lose it. Okay, so Larissa, thank you, first of all, for for the, I'm sure, invaluable support that you've provided our businesses in Nacogdoches. provided our businesses in Nacogdoches. And I appreciate your dynamic ability to pivot in, in pandemic times. So thank you. I wanted to ask just a question about that report that we, that we had, that you had commissioned in terms of whether we should change what types of industries or businesses we try to attract to Nacogdoches. And I wanted to ask, one, would you end up developing any like concrete action items out of that report? And then, I mean, two, I'm assuming a lot of that had to be thrown out the window with the pandemic. And so how that, that affected the original plan of action, I guess?
Luckily, and thank you for the question, luckily, a lot of the plan remains in place. We, the nature of those businesses still remains positive and helpful for Nacogdoches. And so we, we luckily didn't have to throw the plan out, didn't really have to, to remove any of the plan. We are finishing up the, the specific tasks from that, that study. I've called a plan, it's really more of an analysis of Nacogdoches. And so it doesn't include you should do X to achieve Y. It just tells us you should try to achieve Y, if that makes sense. And so as soon as that is completed, we will certainly send that your direction.
Great, thank you. And whatever happened to that, to that company that was supposed to do the solar panel, they were supposed to do solar panel manufacturing, whatever happened to those guys?
So they, not every business works out, unfortunately. And we worked with them, we worked with the state, and we just never really got down the road with them. Unfortunately, they have decided to locate back to New Mexico. We're hopeful that we can, can attract a similar business, but unfortunately that one just did not work out here locally.
Doesn't seem, based on what I'm hearing, sorry, what I'm hearing that it was through, not that you can pinpoint any failing on, on our part in terms of, I mean, I'm sure not in terms of being welcoming, but anything else that, that, that we could have done?
No ma'am, I don't think so. We spent quite a bit of time with the business owner as far as obtaining a zoning and specific use permit, had several pre-development meetings, had several meetings with city administration and development staff with, with the business owner. And I believe their business plans just changed.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Philpot. We appreciate the annual report tonight.
Thank you.
So agenda item number 12, Discuss Pilgrims Pride Hometown Strong Grant Program. And we have Fire Chief Kiplinger with us. Good evening.
Mayor and Council Keith Kiplinger, you're Fire Chief. Thank you for giving me a little bit of time on your agenda tonight. You'll give me just a moment, we will get to the presentation. So several weeks ago, Pilgrims Pride contacted the city about their hometown strong grant program and asked us to come up with a list of projects that they could possibly fund. They had allocated $50 million across their system to local projects in communities where they have operations. Staff gave them numerous projects. We included parks and athletic facilities and trails and operational needs, everything from, everything from trail extensions really to a fire engine. Pilgrims focused on public safety related projects. Staff evaluated the potential projects based on the budget estimate provided by pilgrims, the speed of deployment, what did we have that was kind of shovel ready that we could do expeditiously, and the needs of the community. So staff worked together and met with the pilgrims folks, and after a lot of discussion, settled on some improvements at the emergency operations and training center that's located at the former racetrack out on Lone Star Road behind the Nacogdoches County Exposition Center. It's a big city-owned piece of property. That piece of property currently includes the county emergency operations center. The county has a land lease of one acre of that site where with, in a joint project between the city and the county and dollars from FEMA, we built an emergency operations center. When we built that building, funding only allowed us to build out about 85% of it. So there is a classroom or emergency operations center room, a couple of breakout or conference rooms, a kitchen, two restrooms. And, but the balance of the building was not built out. And so our proposal to pilgrims initially was to complete the build out of the second large classroom or emergency operations center working room. So when it's being used as an emergency operations center, we, we, we focus on just that, managing a disaster, a hurricane or, or any other event. But in the times that we're not using it in for that purpose, we have some classroom space that's available, primarily being used for public safety training. Currently, the Angelina College Fire Academy meets there Monday through Friday. But this will allow us to build out that second classroom, complete the third restroom, which was always in the design, add a generator and some other equipment to that facility. And that would cost approximately $225,000. So if you look at the building, everything to the right of the green line was basically completed in phase one. And the, everything to the left of the red line was intended to be in phase two. So that's all built out, but it's just not been completed. And so this would allow us to complete it and add that emergency generator that we, that we definitely need at that, at that facility. The second piece of the proposal to pilgrims is to construct an emergency services training tower and a burn building. That would be for rescue and fire training, law enforcement training, and it would be used by the city fire department, along with all of our volunteer fire department partners in the county. It would be used by Angelina College and actually regionally. It'll be adjacent to the emergency operations center and those classrooms. Now that burn building will replace one that we have here in town off of Power Street that was condemned more than 15 years ago because of structural problems. So currently firefighters, Nacogdoches firefighters are traveling to the south side of Longview to do live fire training because it's the only place that we can do that in our region. And so the estimated cost of that four-story drill tower and a one-story burn room or an, an area that you could actually do live fire training is $500,000. And I, I've got a kind of a picture of what that would look like. There are a number of different companies out there that, that, that produce these, these products, and this is one of those examples. We're confident that we could get it within the $500,000 budget range. We have asked pilgrims, we've submitted a proposal to pilgrims for this project. They have not approved it yet. It's going, working its way through their, their corporate offices. But we feel confident that this would be a, a really good addition, not only for us, but for our volunteer partners in the county and other fire departments in our region to try to, to improve our abilities to provide services. So the drill tower would have the ability to repel lots of rescue props. You can notice on the roof that there's a place you actually can cut the hole in the roof to do ventilation. And so this is a good, safe way for us to practice and to make sure that we're providing the highest level of service that we can. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Chief, real quick, I'm sorry, this is Mario. Your image is not, you haven't, your image hasn't been shown the entire presentation. So I, I'm just curious if maybe you can just go back to a couple of the images, the slide, not go through the whole thing again, but just maybe show a couple of the visuals.
Okay, so you're not seeing those now?
No sir, just, we're seeing you, which is great to see.
Okay, well, no, that's, that's very, give me one second, let me see if I can reshare. Is that working now?
Uh, no sir.
Okay. An error occurred. Of course. Try again. I'm not sure technologically, I am completely at a loss.
Had it for a split second. There you go.
There.
Okay, are we there now?
Yes, sir.
There you go. Maybe, I'm very sorry. Maybe just go to just a couple of visuals of the elevation and then just as.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So there's the site out off of the West Loop at the old racetrack. There, there's the building as it currently sits, everything to the right of that green line is complete and everything to the left of the red line is just the shell. And so, and then there's the training, the fire training tower and building, that four-story tower that I talked about. That's an example of what, what that would look like out next to the EOC.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you. So, Council, do you have any questions? We'll start with Mr. Bolden.
Chief, so the funding from pilgrims, it had to be direct funds on certain projects?
So, so we gave them a list of projects to take a look at, and pilgrims identified sort of a very, narrowed the scope down to what they were really interested in funding. And so this, this, we believe this fits within what they're looking for.
So they didn't go for the parks and trails?
We, we thought they'd go for a softball field, but that didn't happen.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fisher.
No ma'am, this sounds great. I'm excited.
Okay, Mr. Anderson.
It sounds like a very exciting program, and it would be great to have, have one of the, the few training facilities like that in the region.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So I guess you will keep us posted, Chief Kiplinger?
Yes ma'am, if the, if the project is funded, then we'll be back to council to talk about contracts for, for doing the project and get your approval before we move forward with anything.
Okay, great. Well, best of luck, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh huh. Okay, we're going to now move to our last agenda item, number 13. Discuss and possibly take action. Actually, we may just end up giving direction to staff concerning amending agenda schedule for future city council meetings. This idea came to me after we had meetings when council met during our city manager search, and we were meeting in the afternoons, and some of these meetings were held before our regularly scheduled council meetings, and it seemed to work very well. And so I wanted to propose that we talk about holding our executive sessions, our council-led discussions or workshops, and informal, oh, information, I guess, received from the city manager and staff on city issues and upcoming agenda items before our scheduled council meetings. These talks could be more informal in nature. We don't even have to sit up where we usually sit, and they would still be open to the public, except for, of course, the executive sessions. The council workshops that we held last fall and winter could also be incorporated into this format. So what I'd like to propose is that we try moving to an afternoon once a month, I guess we could do it twice if necessary, a meeting time prior to the Tuesday evening meetings to start around four o'clock in the afternoon, unless the number of topics or the complexity of an issue calls for additional time, and then we could start at three. And because September is so full, we could start this beginning with our October 4th meeting. And I did visit about this with our city manager, Mr. Conasars. And would you like to add anything before council, before we start discussing and they have some questions or comments?
Sure, Mayor, thank you for, for bringing that to light. I think over the coming weeks and months, as I get more familiar with the community and the issues at hand here with, with the items that staff would like to bring forward or have direction on, I think it's important to have those, those workshop type topics brought before council to get, again, we're not looking at an official vote, just get some direction. My intentions would be to bring certain items to you all through staff presentations or presentations from myself or others. Hopefully have a really good discussion amongst you, you all, and then really to give us direction to make sure we're heading in the right, heading in the right manner based on the goals and objectives that you all have. So really, as Mayor said, it's, it's more of an informal discussion. We're, it'll be obviously appropriately captioned. It's open to the public, but it's literally almost, whether it's virtually or as we get more to a point in person, almost sitting around the kitchen table, kind of discussing some of the issues at hand that are, that are, that are necessary to continue moving the organization and the community forward.
Yeah, and if I might add, it also will help us in knowing some things that'll be upcoming on agendas. So we won't be seeing them for the first time, and so I think that could be very helpful. Ms. Fisher, what are your thoughts on this proposal?
I like it. I like the format. I think that having upcoming with agenda items prior to, to actually having to have a vote on them would be really helpful. I think it's a really good idea.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
I, I am very much in favor of it. The more time we have to just freely and openly discuss things, I, I am absolutely in favor of that. And as long as the timing doesn't create any problems for attendance for anyone, I'm all for it.
Okay, and Mr. Bolden?
I'm in favor of it. Now, these discussion informal items are not items that's going to be on the agenda, right? Correct? Maybe in the future?
Yes, sir, in the future, not on the agenda that evening.
Right, yeah. So, all right, that was, oh, items that could be proposed are to be on a future agenda, right?
Yes, it could be that. And again, it's something that if we have a consensus that, that we would like to move forward with this, we'll try it and, and see how it goes. It, it hopefully will work well virtually and once we get back to meeting in, in person. Does anyone want to add anything else?
I know you said, just for clarification purposes, we could use that time also for, for our workshops, what we were calling our workshops that we did, instead of taking a city council meeting to do the workshop. Is that right?
Yes, and it, it may be that we can fit in one topic, you know, on one day, instead of trying the two like we had done before. And so if, if there is something you would like to do, you know, talk about, we can certainly do that. I know that our new city manager is going to have a lot of things he wants to bring to us, and, and I'm excited about that, especially having that conversation. I think we've all felt sort of disjointed being, having so much done virtually, and we really don't want to wait longer to get back together. And so this could be a way that, that would help foster that. So if, it sounds like everyone is willing to try that, we will make sure we check with Mr. Hens when he gets back and hope that this is a good plan to work with him also. So that concludes our agenda for this evening and concludes our meeting for August 18th, 2020. Thank you all for attending.